So I'm just saying we're in session. So, good evening. Hopefully, everybody's enjoying the snow and finally we get a little bit. Welcome to this work-study session of Independent School District 624 with the Clerk Police Call role.
Boy.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Allison here.
Bagley here.
Mullen.
Here.
New Master here.
And Wilson.
Here.
All right. First on the addition of the student is the site-level planning process update from the board liaisons. I know inside the packet there was a schedule of rooms that we were going to, so Mr. Chapman is going to room 210. Ms. Bagley is in here into this room. Ms. Ellison's in 201. I'm here. Ms. Boy is in 210. Ms. New Master is here and then Mr. Wilson is 201, from my understanding.
I'm sure.
This sounds like you guys are. So if we could convene in those rooms, and then what time? Were we thinking about 6:00 up here? Is that a plan?
That's a plan.
So we've got about 20, about five minutes to get there. You have about 20 minutes in each room, and then we'll reconvene back here at 6:00. So with that, thank you, and we can move on to that piece. Please, let's bring, let's ask those. Okay. With no questions, we will go on to the comprehensive facilities plan update. Is that gentleman?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Come on up. Paul and Sal.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. As you recall, on September 10th, we presented to the board a plan for a comprehensive facility study. At that time, we asked the board to act on our proposal that we have a facilities committee. The committee would be comprised of approximately 90 staff members and community members, and the committee would be divided into three subcommittees. And the subcommittees would meet, and we'd bring a composite proposal or summary of the needs back to you in January. And so, a lot of time and a lot of meetings have passed since October, and here we are. So with me tonight are Sal Begley and Paul Apokowski from Old Architects and Engineers. Throughout this process, we've had, each committee has been involved in seven meetings, and Paul and Sal have facilitated the process expertly, brought us to outstanding summary document and presentation tonight. So I'll turn it over to Sal and Paul.
Thanks, Tim. Thank you. Thank you for having us here tonight. Really, our goal tonight is to give you, I would call it, an interim update. So we're looking for input on the process for the committee, as well as waiting for the public information survey that you've launched, which you're going to get the results of tonight. So, this is an update. We focused most of our time so far on really identifying the needs in the school district and agreeing on those needs, and in the next month, we're going to really launch more into the solution phase of things and start talking about options. Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about some of the information that the task force has had. We will highlight a few of those in more detail, but we want to point out that everything the task force has done, including all the subcommittees, is on the district's website. So the full reports of that are available, not only to you, but to the public out there. You had seen, the school has seen the tasks statement, the charge statement that the committee had. We're working on creating eventually a long-range planning, plan for the district that will meet the educational goals of the district, be financially attainable, and really embody the values and priorities of the school district, and that is part of why we have so many people of your citizens and community members involved. And obviously, we need to accommodate the district's programs and your enrollment as it comes forward. So our outcome that we're shooting for is the White River Lake area schools will have a comprehensive, long-range facilities master plan to accommodate enrollment programs over the next 10 years that is financially sustainable. And the reason we highlight 10 years, it's a good measure to try to predict 10 years out. Enrollment gets very, very tricky to do beyond 10 years, so really what we're looking to do is try to answer the needs that we can more solidly identify, as well as a long enough timeline that it makes sense to commit resources to an investment of that.
So for the facility planning committee process, there's a graphic here that you saw at your September board meeting. We had two meetings altogether in October, on October 9th and 23rd, and went over some kind of basic information that everybody needed to know, and we'll hear about that tonight, and then broke into the study committees that Tim mentioned. So learning spaces, community spaces, and physical conditions were those committees. And the bubbles in this diagram represent kind of the topics under their purview. You'll hear more about that. And each one of those committees met, actually, the community spaces committee finished their work in three meetings, but each committee met four times between November and December. And then we had one meeting back together just about two weeks ago to put everything back together and see if we all agree. And it's been about 28 hours of meetings so far with those 90 participants. I'm not going to read all the names, but I have the membership of each of the committees up here. So this is the learning spaces committee, and all of the committees are made up of a diverse group of stakeholders in your district, so staff, students, parents, alumni, community members, business members, and everywhere in between. Each committee has about 30 people. They're not quite balanced. The learning spaces committee, in addition to the information seen at the first two meetings, covered technology in education, educational programming goals, equity, modernization, branding, grade configuration, and alignment of the strategic vision. The community spaces committee, I'll keep the names up here for a moment, again, had some student participation, coaches, parents, staff members, teachers. Covered athletics and performance spaces, community partnerships, and activities in the community, though their four meeting dates are listed there. And then the third committee is the physical conditions committee. The names are up here, just under 30 people on that committee, and they covered site design, and transportation, and safety, building condition, capacity enrollment, and grade configuration, and operations.
And we should point out that there are several members of the task force here, and we'll probably give them a chance to just talk a little bit at the end about their involvement in the process and where we're at now. We're going to spend a little time then just summarizing some of the information that they went through. In the first two meetings, which were full committee meetings with all 90 participants, we talked about facility information, the strategic plan, the enrollment projections, capacity analysis for the district, educational alignment, activities, athletics, and fine arts, safety and security, and facility analysis. We're going to highlight again a few of those things in more detail for you.
I suggest to give a baseline of the facilities information for the district, you have just over 1.8 million square feet. That breaks into nine elementary schools, two middle schools, the two campuses of the high school, and a few other facilities.
For capacity analysis, we did a full analysis. We went and met with every site. We walked each building, and we worked with the administration to develop kind of a comprehensive view of the whole district and an equitable measurement of each building to establish the capacities, and then followed up with all of the building administrators to make sure that they're in agreement with the projected capacity. This chart shows you some of the summary of capacity versus enrollment, and that enrollment is based on this last October's enrollment. And you can see that if you compare those numbers at each grade level, you're about full. You're not quite full. Some grade levels are a little bit more than others, but you're at a point where it's starting to get a little uncomfortable, and you're starting to need to use space really efficiently.
We provided some information for the facility planning committee about capacity. So this pie chart for the elementary school shows the size, capacity of each building. So you can see your larger buildings and are the larger pieces of the pie there. And then the bar chart to the right-hand side of that is the enrollment versus the capacity. See many buildings approaching or having surpassed their capacity. Those same two charts for your middle schools, so seeing that Sunrise has a little bit smaller capacity than Central, and both middle schools being at or over capacity currently. And then the high schools and high school campuses and the ALC. So that's a picture of today's enrollment versus capacity, and then we spent some time looking at enrollment projections.
And again, as you approach being full with your current students, your enrollment projection is great news for the district that you're vital and growing, but it means that you're going to run out of space in the near future. We spent a great deal of time talking about this enrollment report with the task force, and they are recommending that you plan around the 75% projection, which if you remember that enrollment projection, tried to project total build out of the district, and the 75% was the middle-of-the-road, I guess, solution. Some people wanted more, some people wanted less, but it, I think, represents a good, reasonable approach to how many students you may be having in the near future. And that, as you can see from this chart, starts to just build and grow over the next 10 years. That will have you getting about 2,200 more students over the next 10 years. And then we have to break down by grade level, so at the elementary, that's about 600 additional students. At the middle level, about 650, and at the high school, nearly 1,000 more students are scheduled to arrive with those projections.
So Dennis Cheesebro from Teamworks gave that presentation via recording to the facility planning committee, and then spent a lot of time in the study committee reviewing and processing that information. Another topic that was covered at the large committee meetings, Mark Garrison and Sarah Paul presented about the future of education, kind of the various stages that education has gone through in the district, and really brought that forward together with alignment with the strategic plan and the strategy six about ensuring learning environments enhance educational experience, and really left the committee with a question of how to create learning spaces that empower graduates to make meaningful contributions. So, not necessarily an answer, but one of our main things we're trying to address with this facility planning master plan.
We also spent some time talking about safety and security in schools, and that really encompasses a number of topics. For security, it's really about finding a balance of making sure that education can happen and is sort of unrestricted, and what it needs to do to educate kids, because that is, of course, your primary mission, but also having a healthy balance of how do you keep them safe, and how do you plan around the unfortunate events that are happening in our society today. And the committee really centered around the idea of balancing towards being a school and open and welcome, and then making sure that you have the facilities and the tools to secure a building. The secure vestibule is one of the primary ways to do that, and I think you're familiar with that. You have many in your district, but basically, once school day starts, the doors are locked and people are forced into the office or into a supervision where they can be screened. And, go ahead.
The committee reviewed the safety and security standard that's been developed with the district administration with Kevin Klecker, who was brought on to the district last summer. So the idea of having a standard that all buildings have secure vestibules with a direct connection to the main office, so there's a couple buildings that right now have a technology solution in lieu of being physically directly connected to the main office, reviewing the camera coverage the district wants to have for security cameras and the quality, and being able to integrate those with other systems, and just in general, having good, always improving building access control, including before and after school, which was a big topic. At the second meeting, the facility planning committee got a presentation from John Anderson and Brian Pelican, your activities director, about activities, athletics, and fine arts. So, just an explanation of the variety of people who use the district's buildings, both district-sponsored activities and your many community partners and members, kind of some stats about your high school co-curriculars, how many sponsored activities and clubs you have. Reviewed fine arts, so having four secondary schools, but only three performance spaces, in particular Sunrise lacking a performance space, and your growing orchestra program not having adequate space at many of the buildings. Reviewed the various types of athletic and activity spaces you have, how many gyms do you have, where are they, who uses them, how do they, how you do creative scheduling now to make everything work, given your space crunch. Reviewed some deficiencies in places you have to be creative with scheduling to make all of your demands on your spaces have grown, and how to make all those things work. And finally, landing on a, kind of a good succinct slide of current reality, that with your population growing, there's more need for, and these really are, learning spaces, your associations being limited on their ability to grow due to lack of access, so those prime practice hours are in very high demand, and that creative scheduling can only disguise that need for so long.
We also did a comprehensive study of the facilities in the district. We call it a facility analysis. It really is a look at the deferred maintenance needs of the district, looking for things that are broken or not working, or likely to fail in the near future, as well as things just approaching the end of their useful life. We also review building codes, and that analysis is not really, doesn't really take into account the future changes in enrollment. It's really just trying to measure the state of how things are now. As part of that, we also looked at school funding for projects. There are basically, you know this, but for the public, there's really two big categories that are important for this. It's your operating funding and your capital funding, and those two have, are mutually exclusive in most cases, but for capital projects, you generally have local taxes, state funding, which is a very minimal part of the equation, federal, which is even more minimal, and then other things like grants and donations, which I call very, very minimal. So, really, what that says is, local taxes are the primary way that facilities projects get done, and there's a few different ways to accomplish that, but that becomes the primary thing. We also pointed out to the group that capital funding is prevented from going into operating, so once you secure funding for projects, it can't be used for funding of operations. And while it's technically possible for you to take money out of the general fund and put it towards capital projects, you know, for all intents and purposes, that's not very practical, because it requires you to essentially have less teachers and less education staff to fund projects, and it's a losing proposition. So, all of that said, really, the way that financing in our state is set up, that is that bond referendums and other local tax levies are the way that projects get done, and because those do that, because of that funding source and the difficulty in getting that, or the, it means that you defer projects and take your time and figure out how to do intervals and infuse money into the buildings at certain periods of time. Which gets to the definition of deferred maintenance, which we had to spend some time on, because people often find that to be an odd term. It basically just means that you postpone maintenance that could be done, and it's really no different than anybody would do on your house. If you have put off painting your house because the paint was only peeling a little bit, that's deferred maintenance, or if your floor is looking a little ratty, but you wait a few years to replace it, that's deferred maintenance. So it's pretty normal. The trick is, when you have something as big as your district with so many spare feet of building, it adds up to a much bigger ticket item. The process for that facility analysis is, we walked all the buildings, we looked at all the blueprints that we could, and did an analysis of that as much as we could. We then met with district staff. We, in most cases, walked the buildings with those district staff, so quite a few hours went into that. Then went through a process of doing at least a first-rounded prioritization, which is something that may be reevaluated as we look at options with the group, but there's at least a first crack at that, and then put together cost estimates, and of course, we did that with our own HINOS team, as well as the folks from Carl Sanderson helped us estimate those things. To put those things in perspective, we also had some kind of industry benchmarks for how you should look at maintenance. The first one up here, what we've done is taken a look at a brand-new building and looked at the life cycle of each of the components in that building and the cost, and then prorated that over the life of the building. And that would suggest that you should spend somewhere around $5 or a little over $5 a square foot for each of your buildings in order to keep up with the replacement cost. And that doesn't mean you're spending $5 a square foot every year, but you need to save up a few years and then do a roof, or save up a couple years and do carpeting, those kind of things. And over the square footage of your district, that would mean that you should spend about $9.46 a square foot just to keep up with the deterioration of buildings over time. We've also looked at another benchmark. The Building Owners and Managements Association looks at a number of 2% to 4% of the replacement cost of the building. And on the 2% side, on the low end, that's more like that just keeping up with things that go wrong. At 4%, they're also looking at things that they would call tenant improvements or minor changes in the building for changes in use. And that benchmark, prorated over the, all of your buildings, would get you to somewhere between about $12 million and $23.4 million a year to keep up with your buildings. And so you can see, that's out of the reach of your district, and every district in the state is in the same state. You can't do that every year. You're just going to have that kind of funding, and so it requires, again, that periodically school districts do bond referendums to kind of do a catch-up and take care of that deferred I guess I kind of covered the rest of this. As I said, we did building tours, looked at different things. You can see a few of the pictures here. We have an extensive database now of pictures of things in your buildings, meeting with staff and working up priorities. Let's go up to the summary. And here you can see just a dispersion of the categories and the, where that funding really lands, or the needs really land, and you can see that the secondary buildings tend to have a little bit older and be a little bit more needy than the other districts in the building, but it's certainly spread across the whole district. Every building has something that would like to have done to it. Some examples of things that are in play, at the high schools, windows, complete HVAC replacement, at least in parts of the building, hot and cold water pipes and systems are getting to the end of their useful life. ADA needs in the building, so things have changed over time with codes and how codes are interpreted, so there's some things to catch up there. At the middle schools, it's a similar thing, windows, ADA needs, replacement of the HVAC systems in whole or in part, in parts of the building. And then the elementary schools have received a little bit more attention over the years, but it's really been a little bit piecemeal, so it hasn't been system-wide replacements on any of the building. So again, those same kind of things become a need, so the more critical HVAC needs, fire alarm systems, and some of those others. And this chart just shows the kind of shift in priorities amongst the different building And so here you can see, again, those four priorities, it's actually five. The LTFM one is sort of everything that didn't fit in 1 through 4, and how that stacks up. Priority one items are things that it would be good to take care of in the next few years. We don't exactly have any timeline, because it's a failure, based on failure. And you can see that the total for that list goes all the way up to over $270 million. And I would say it is normal for school districts not to address all of that in any given time, that some of it you'll continue to defer. As we get down into priority 3 and 4, those things will easily make it several years, and you could probably nurse along for quite a few more years into the future. And all of those things can be addressed with regular maintenance and kind of put off the total replacement, but you reach a point of diminishing returns where you're fixing things more and more often. Some of the options you have for moving forward, maintaining the status quo, which is, again, you're going to get into more of that, fixing things more often and trying to keep up. You could include a good chunk of this in a referendum and get an infusion of cash, basically, to work on some of these projects. You could, in the long-term, increase your LTFM funding, again, to try to get ahead of that curve a little bit. And then there's also the option of bonding with your LTFM, which helps you, again, do bigger projects in a chunk of time. We'll see if questions till the end.
Yeah. So that's a high-level overview of what the committee got at the first two meetings. I just wanted to give a brief overview of a few things that were reviewed in the study committee meetings. This is something we spent time at the January 16th meeting in this room catching everybody else up on. So they heard about trends in education, early learning overview and future plans, site safety and transportation, a few comparisons to peer districts as requested by members, some review of the high school alignment, which Tim is going to join us for, and then a primer, Ellers came and did an overview of school finance for them, and they also requested the district's referendum history, so we prepared that for them.
We also spent some time talking about trends in education and educational facilities. We're undergoing kind of a rapid change in the last few years in what schools can do and want to do, and how they should look. It really is based on the idea of personalized learning, and that learning really should be able to happen anywhere in a building, so that you can use that building to its full extent, and teachers have all the tools they need to differentiate, as well as a huge emphasis on flexibility, because that flexibility allows teachers and students to do what they need to do in the moment, and possibly shift to a different strategy for a different need or a different time. We looked at a number of different sources for where this is coming from. There's some great videos out there on the internet if you haven't seen them, but basically, most of the education system that we know in America is rooted in the industrial revolution and the idea that you move kids through basically on a factory-line model, so if you tell them all the same information, they come out with the same results. And I think there's a real strong realization that that's not how human beings are, and that's not how our kids are. And so education is really trying to turn now to the idea of how do we identify the needs of each student and then deliver education in a way that that student's going to benefit the most from. And if you can imagine, if the idea is to teach everybody the same thing, sitting them down in rows in a classroom and imparting knowledge to them makes sense with the old-style classroom. A modern classroom wants to be much more dynamic and allow a lot more differentiation. And that really goes through all grade levels, so at the younger levels, it can really be just about giving those students the ability to group and work individually, or work on different topics. As we get into the older grade levels, that you can imagine would also branch out into their future and career and college readiness, and different ways for them to pursue paths. This is an example of one of our recent schools that really looks at the classroom in a different way. This is one wing or a pod of this building, and it really looks at that concept of breaking down walls of a classroom, and looks at it as what we call a learning studio. And rather than one room with 25 or 30 kids and a teacher, it's really a whole assemblage of rooms with seven or so staff and about 140 or 50 kids, and being a dynamic environment that can change, so that the educators and students can flex within that space and do different things.
We reviewed early childhood programming, so not everybody in the committee was aware of the many various programs you have, and the fact that it's covered under the umbrellas of both community education and special education, so kind of the names of different programs, what is ECFE, what is ECSE, what grade levels or ages do they serve? So we covered some of that. High-level overview of what your program looked like over the past couple years, how many students are served, so over 800 students in the 17, 18 school year, and in what programs they were served, preschool, ECFE, ECSE, in birth to 2 and 3 to 5. Reviewed some growth trends over the past few years. So you can see preschool going from 200 students to 300 students, over 300 students in that three-year growth period, and similar patterns being seen in your other programming. On your current reality of percent of total capacity by location, so the buildings that you currently offer early childhood programming at, and how many open seats you have, and the waiting list that you have at several sites. So there was a longer presentation for them, but then at the 16th meeting, after meeting with district administration, Angela and Kate and others, talking about the desired future delivery model. Obviously, with the enrollment growth that the district's going to be experiencing, early learning will be impacted by that as well. So need to have that taken into account, as well as the idea that in the future, their desire to have some preschool presence at every elementary school, as that's a strong desire of your parents and your families, and a hypothetical plan would be to have one preschool room at every elementary school, and perhaps two rooms at title schools, and then other programming that really benefits from being centralized, having that central location with enough room to both accommodate your current programming and to grow. One central location, I think, was preferred by that admin team, but that two locations could work. Brief overview of transportation and site safety, so just reviewed with the facility planning committee, what is district-operated versus what is contracted with first student. Some interesting statistics that you have ridership at 85 to 90% at almost every site besides South Campus. You've got a lot of drivers over there. And then reviewed your transportation with your high school campuses set up, that buses go to North Campus, and then there are shuttle buses, and how you make that work with scheduling. Again, at a high level, you have about 8,500 students this year, and almost 7,000 of them riding a bus. And then reviewed that you have your maintenance and storage facility on North Campus. And while it is centrally located, it is challenging due to the size of it and the other constraints placed on this campus here. So here's an image of that. For those who are not familiar, the North Campus is the recognizable circle building at the top of the image. It's just a little bit below that. And then talked about site safety best practices. So in addition to talking about safety inside the buildings and what that looks like and what that standard is, what do we want our site, how do we want our site support safety? So to separate parent and bus drop-off and pickup traffic wherever possible, to provide adequate parking and queuing spaces for the number of buses you need, including safe turning spaces, avoiding students having to cross-traffic, and providing a safe route onto and off of site for pedestrians and walkers. Talked about a couple examples. So Onika is a good example of where it works quite well, given the size of the site and the fact that you were able to plan a separate parent drop-off area from the bus drop-off area, and the amount of parking seems adequately suited to the building, as contrasted by some of your older buildings, especially some of your older elementary schools on very tight urban sites. So Lake Erie is being an example of where it is extremely challenging to separate those streams of traffic just because of the acreage you have there. So some of those are just constraints based on the sites that you have. And then talked about Central Middle School or this campus being an area where you particularly have traffic challenges, buses being on the north half there, your special needs buses trying to come close to the front door on the north side of the hippodrome, staff parking being somewhat distributed, and you do your best to try to have parents pick up and drop off just south of the hippodrome, but can be a very, very exciting and busy space at pickup and drop-off time. And then, I think this is last but not least, before we get to high school stuff, the community spaces committee asked for some comps to their peer districts, so we worked with the admin to come up with this list of peer districts, both by sort of enrollment size, as well as who you end up playing in games against or going to see their venues. This first one is a gym-to-student ratio, so you can see White River Lake Area High School, obviously, we counted both campuses, has Obviously, we counted both campuses has really two gyms, one at each campus, so you can see the ratio there is 1 to 1244. Roseville is a little bit close second at 1 to 1,113, but many of your peers having many more gyms per student. And that obviously was evidenced in the presentation we got about how creative you have to be with scheduling and pushing people off-site.
And we should point out that Roseville is currently building additional gyms, so...
And this, I should say, was put together by, both our knowledge of the buildings, we're doing projects in some of them, as well as interviews with those districts' athletic directors. A number of auditorium seats at their largest performance venue, 450 for White Bear Lake Area Schools, and you can see many others in the 700 to even up to 950 at East Ridge. Last but not least, outdoor fields and how many of those were artificial turf versus grass fields. This slide is a little hard to read on here. I apologize for that. But one other district comparison was just area high schools. So this shows the district and the school district name, total district enrollment, how many high schools they have, the grade configuration of that high school. You can see on here, all of these peers are 912. White Bear Lake Area Schools is the 910, 1112 at the bottom. And then the number of students in that high school. So just giving them some information on how other people's high schools are configured. One last interesting piece of information before Tim goes into the high school alignment. This graph shows the size of your graduating class over time. So you can see the, sorry, it's black and white on mine. Green shows White Bear High School. And then when the blue bar is palm-layered on top of it, that would be Mariner. And then when it turns to the goldenrod color, that would be when you went to the two campuses arrangement. So Tim's going to talk a little bit about the history of how that came to be.
Okay. So White Bear Lake has had, high school has been in four different buildings. Looking at the picture of here, you see the first two, Washington School built in 1890 and then the building we're in right now, the new high school built in 1918 was the first school built really just to be a high school. In 1964, a new high school was built, and that was White Bear Lake High School, built on the old fairgrounds. In 1974, the previous chart that Sal showed showed increasing enrollment in the '60s and '70s, and Mariner High School was built in 1974. We had two high schools for a 10-year period, Mariner serving students on the south end and White Bear High School serving students on the north end. In 1983, we went to a split campus where the building on the north end, White Bear High School, became White Bear High School North Campus, serving students in 910. Mariner High School became White Bear High School South Campus, serving students in grades 11 and 12. And that's our current status. So there was a time when the school board and community was faced with a decision about, should we go to, how will we restructure our high school? Because the writing was on the wall that our senior classes were graduating about 200 students larger than our enrolling kindergarten classes, and they thought that two high schools was not going to be a sustainable model. So they started to look at, what could they do? Reducing into one building wouldn't work. There just wasn't enough space in either. Both those buildings were built small for small graduate or small class sizes, or, excuse me, just to be small schools. And they recognized that they couldn't fit all those students in one building. So they formed a secondary organization advisory committee in August of 1982, and they came up with a recommendation of a split campus. And this slide identifies what the recommendations for the split campus. So the kind of three areas, student opportunities, efficiency of services, school and community pride. They felt like if we split our campuses, we'd save some electives that struggle with enrollment in a smaller high school, so we continued to enjoy the benefits that the larger high schools had. There'd be less course conflicts. We'd have larger grade levels. That means more sections of everything at each of those sites. And so students would have an opportunity to access courses better. There'd be an efficiency of services. Councilors will serve the same grade level each year. They'd become specialized in grade-appropriate services. It would reduce or maintain class sizes, at least in the near future. And then they saw that community unity and the rivalry between the two high schools, that'd be a positive thing for the community. And all grade-level students were together. The students spent their summers participating in the same teams and programs, and then they were at different high schools during the school year, and there was some rivalry there. There were also arguments against the split campus. Dividing those into three categories, the school experience will change negatively, impact an opportunity for students in practical matters. There was concern that it would fragment the sound high school environment that the students at Mariner and White Bear High School were currently experiencing. There was concern that there would be a void of upper-class role models for ninth and 10th grade students. They wondered if there would be a lack of school identity. Does it feel like one high school, especially for the ninth and 10th graders? And then in terms of impact on opportunity, too many transitions would be challenging for students. Access to all classes, students may have difficulty changing their four-year plan because perhaps classes wouldn't be available to them in one building or the other. Less opportunities for students to participate in extracurricular activities. And then some practical matters, like the bus rides would be longer and a more expensive transportation system. Would we really be able to park all the juniors and seniors that would need to park at one of those high schools? Size of the graduating class would be too big, and then this decision felt like it was happening to people. People felt like it was happening too fast. And as I read through those, you know, I reflect that these are all the conversations we have probably over the last 35 years about our split campus. What I will say is that we have a tremendous group of teachers and administrators and staff who work really hard to mitigate those challenges, although those challenges pretty much played out the way that they're presented there. I want to just go through quickly a few comments from our teaching staff about their concerns regarding the split campus and why they'd like to see this facility's solutions to somehow address the split campus. This teacher said, "I love this hashtag, hashtag #highschoolstartshere." They used that at North Campus with the incoming ninth graders. "But I wish we didn't have to explain to students that high school actually begins at North Campus. They often think it really starts at South Campus. Junior year is hard in any high school, but so much more difficult for our students due to the transition. They must tackle the challenges of a new school, new staff, new academic rigor, as well as post-secondary stuff. In grades nine to 10, they are in high school that often doesn't feel like a high school, and they aren't always convinced that these grades matter." One visiting junior said, "Junior year comes barreling at you. The split campus makes it worse. Students get comfortable in one building, and when they should be excelling, they are uprooted to another building." This teacher commented on academics and said, "As White Bear teachers, we pride ourselves on building strong relationships with students. We often hear this from parents. And when students really like their teachers, they're willing to do more to achieve. Due to the split campus, these relationships fade fast. It'd be difficult, or it'd be great for my current sophomores to see a senior walk into the room, thank you for a letter of recommendation." The bottom, a senior told me that his relationship with his French teacher was his best one because she traveled between schools. He had her for four years. He would like more connections like that. Regarding achievement, this is from a South Campus teacher who said, "Having taught in the district for 26 years, I can unequivocally state the split campus structure is not what is best for our students. Education is best with flexibility. The inability to maximize student offerings and faculty expertise limits the growth of our students negatively impacting opportunity. When infrastructure has the impact of impeding advancement, it's not student-centered." This one, "Students are not able to build community with students who are more than one year older or younger than themselves," commenting on emotional growth. There is such an important quality, or this is such an important quality of our elementary and middle-level buildings. Emotional and academic maturity is sacrificed at a crucial time in which students should be learning how to collaborate with people of all ages, not just their direct peers." And then the final comment from a teacher is regarding opportunities and activities. "In addition, an additional challenge is sustaining interest in clubs and organizations due to separate buildings. Activities like speech and debate don't see a number of students because they cannot develop relationships with them earlier in the case of speech or keep in touch once they depart in case of debate. Specific to our new curling club, which you may have seen highlighted recently, we're able to touch base with and reach out to students here at North Campus, which is why over 2/3 of our team is from north. Despite advertising it's south, there's challenges with making that happen." So strong messages from our staff who work with our split campus every day, feeling like, while they work really hard to make it work, the challenges are great and now's the time to address that.
And I just want to thank Tim for pulling that together. He actually went and interviewed people and dug through the archives and all that. And I think it's really essential because the high school situation is shaping up to be, I think, one of the key parts of where you go from a facility standpoint. Deciding what you do with that, I think, really is going to be a watershed for the rest of the facilities in the district.
Last topic. The committee was very hungry to learn more about how districts handle all of these facility needs. So Ellers was kind enough to come do a presentation on January 16 about tools for financing capital projects. So explaining that there are different tools available to the district and which ones are best or even possible for each one, and the idea that you may have to combine two or more tools. So I won't read them all, but just went through the financing tools, whether that be bond referendums, capital projects, levies, LTFM and the such. And then the next slide, or the slide from Ellers, is a Tools Grid. So it lists all of the different financing types in the column down the left and what types of projects they can be used for, which was something very useful for the committee. And then last but not least, they wanted some history on the district's election or referendums. So tried to clarify on this with bold and italics, which were operating levies or capital projects, levies versus bond referendums. So there's two slides of this, and you can see which questions of that given referendum passed or failed. Of course, with your most recent renewal of the operating levy in November of 2017. So that is the last of the information that was reviewed at the Facility Planning Committee. And then they spent the bulk of the rest of their time developing the findings and need statements that are the other attachment you have with you.
And there's a great deal of information that was generated in that. We're certainly not going to go through all of it tonight. Again, all of it is available on the district's website. We are just going to highlight some of the categories and just a few key points in each one of those. So we developed these through each learning committee or each committee of topic. The first categories were from the Learning Spaces Committee, and we didn't preordain these topics. They really generated the topics as part of the process. And in doing so, we really had two categories of sort of pieces that they put out there. The full document you will see contains what we call findings, or findings of fact. There really is to set up either how you got here or some information about each one of these topics. And then we have the needs below that, which are the ones that are highlighted here. And these are really, become the parameters that we're going to try to solve now as we go through and look at facilities option. So this committee had the future of learning, early learning and building configuration as their categories. A lot of talk about the students being the primary agent of their learning and that creating a variety of learning spaces is going to better enhance that kind of education and being flexible and adaptable. Space for both current and anticipated future space needs is obviously one of the key parameters of anything for early learning. As you saw before, you're about full, but really there's an unmet need. So your early learning programs are being constrained because of the facilities that you have. And then in the building configuration category, they talked a lot about the student's age should not determine their access to programs, so that's some of the things that Tim highlighted, and the impact of transitions and what those extra transitions affect on students is.
The Community Spaces Study Committee divided their learnings into the following categories. There's indoor facilities, adaptive and diversity, community, outdoor facilities, fine arts and specialized sports. So under indoor facilities, making sure you have an adequate quantity of spaces at the appropriate locations for all users, whether that be daytime PE or your many before and after-school users, and having a variety of multipurpose spaces to be flexible. Adaptive and diversity, making sure there's equitable access to indoor and outdoor facilities, and having reasonable distances for those who have mobility challenges and meeting relevant accessibility codes. Community spaces, to continue to collaborate with your many community partners to provide the right opportunities and experience valued by all, and having a variety of opportunities for all age levels, including potentially social services and kind of entire family care. Outdoor facilities, having appropriate outdoor facilities that are not restricted by either location or the weather as much. Fine arts, having equitable space across all of your buildings to support performances and making sure that all spaces have the right kind of performance space, especially at Sunrise, and that there are some adequate support spaces like storage, scene shop, green room, et cetera, that do not exist even where you do have an auditorium. And last but not least, specialized sports, so just recognizing that you have a lot of activities that have very unique space needs, and they're used both by student athletes as well as community members, and that we need to continue to partner and have flexible multipurpose spaces to meet those needs.
And the Physical Conditions Committee had their own categories to study. Those were equity in facilities, flexible and future-ready spaces, safety in transportation, capacity and enrollment, building condition reports that we have talked about. For equity in facilities, they spent a lot of time talking about that equity doesn't necessarily mean equal, that each set of learners, each part of your district has different needs in a different population. And so your programs and buildings should be adaptable to the needs of that area. Safety and transportation needs, really to implement equitable safety and security standards for all the buildings, including before and after school, which can be a real challenging time for districts because you don't tend to have the same kind of staffing capacity that you do during the day. Capacity and enrollment needs, again, a lot of the energy there went to talking about this enrollment projections, and it was really, I think it took us three meetings to come to consensus on the idea that 75% was sort of the best fit for planning facilities around. And building conditions, really, I think, emerged with the idea that those high priority maintenance needs are probably something the district should figure out how to take on somehow in the short term. And we're a little short of actually telling you the recommendation for that, but really wanted to emphasize that that's an important thing coming up. And then that is kind of the end of the findings and need statements at this point. Again, those become the parameters that we start building options around. As we go forward, we have two more meetings with the full committee where we will talk about, two more before this, I'm sorry, we have one more. We're going to assess the need statements. They're going to get the results of the survey that you see tonight, really kind of do a fine-tuning of all those statements you just heard. And then we're also going to brainstorm options going forward, so really, what are we going to do about this? Then we're going to have a subcommittee that talks about those options in detail, really develops a series of options to bring back to the committee. There'll be two more meetings where they're hopefully going to come to consensus on a recommendation to you on what should happen. And if all goes to plan, we'll be back here in April talking to you about that recommendation. All right. And then we would love to get your questions. We also have some members of the task force here, and we've offered that they would have the ability to kind of say a few words about the process and anything they wanted to share. Does anybody want to step up?
Maybe while they're thinking about that. We wanted to thank them all for their hard work. It was a lot of time put in, a lot of meetings, a lot of discussion.
I think that's honestly the biggest thing is the amount of very thoughtful discussion that went into each, to creating each of these need statements. So, and I would encourage, if you have any questions for any of those three findings about any of those need statements, to reach out to any one of us or any other committee member.
Can you do me a favor, just because we're being recorded, so for the record, can you state your name and what committee you're on?
Apologies. Red Fox, Physical Conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
My name's Joel Peck. And first of all, I want to thank you all for the work that you do. I covered the school board for two years with White Bear Press. That was a lot of work. So thank you for waiting. You've got some big decisions to make. And hopefully the information that we brought can help you with that. I think your consultants did a really good job of leading us through the process and dividing the decisions into very specific compartments, which allowed us to explore, I think, issues more in depth. We did spend, I was also on the physical committees, and I think we deliberated long and hard about what type of development we can expect in the future. And that was really the biggest question, I think. Well, there were many big questions, but what kind of student base will you have in ten years? And the development up in Ugo is going to drive a lot of change, and it's good change. I graduated from White Bear in 1993, and at that time, Sunrise was closed. It was just a mock hall building. It was just a mock hall building. And now you're in a position to have to decide what to do with the students you can expect to be coming. And frankly, the students you have right now. You're kind of busting at the seams. And as a father of two students in the district, I really want my students, my kids to have quality education. So I hope that you take these recommendations seriously. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Other comments?
Yeah, Jared Leeder. I was part of the Learning Spaces Committee. And yeah, I mean, I echo a lot of what they've already said. I mean, it's, I think what we all realized with everything that we learned is we're kind of just at a really seminal moment right now in the history of the district. We're at another one of those moments when, when we kind of need to decide, I mean, what's, what's the next 10 years really going to look like and it's, it's going to shape the future of White Bear Lake. It's going to feed, it's going to shape the future of our school districts. It's going to shape the future of all of our communities that are part of the school district. And it's easy to just call it White Bear Lake, but we've got six, seven, eight other communities. And what's that going to do for all of us? And as you, nine. And, you know, it's, there's a lot of heat. And so, but I think we've got the right people with us to sort of guide us through some recommendations, but it's, I think a lot of us were kind of just overwhelmed at the end of it, wow, what are we going to do here? And so hopefully we can come to some, come to a recommendation that can really help lead forward for the next 10 years.
Are there anything else? Well, I just want to say from me personally, I want to thank you all for your work. I mean, you know, we as a board take this approach that we're all in this thing together and it's really nice to see that it's a bigger group now. We're all in this thing together and moving this thing forward and really appreciate all your time and everything that you, all your efforts of making this thing possible. So thank you all very much. With all that, I note there's a lot of information that came in here, so what I'd like to do is open up to your questions and kind of start that process and start with Ms. Ellison.
Thank you. Again, I want to echo Cheryl and say I appreciate all of your work and what feels like an outpouring of community interest and support in these issues. And I think that says a lot about the community of the White Bear Lake schools and so I'm grateful. My question is, I mean, maybe this is more of a Tim question or just a woman question. We're going to need some money to do all of these things. So what do you envision the timeline looks like for a bond referendum?
Well, if we look at a potential bond referendum in November of 2019, right, that would require us to get our solutions figured out here over the next several months to bring to you folks so that you can review it and by June. And really need to approve going to a vote in July.
So we would, to the bond referendum things, so we would approve the amount that would go onto the ballot.
You would call for the election and determine the amount that we'd be asking.
And do you have a sense, based on the success of the operating levy being renewed two falls ago, do you have a good sense that this might be possible? Because I was looking over the history of our libraries and bond referendums and it's kind of two-thirds passing. So if you can predict it, we should.
Yeah, could also comment on the stock market over the next.
Lottery number.
A year ago, we said yesterday, today is a non-student day until the crystal ball worked for today. We got to find that crystal ball and what is the decision about today?
No, I think, you know, I think it's, I think yours is a great question because that's a question that we need to answer before we would go to the public and ask for support. We, you'll see you later tonight, results of our community survey. There's a lot of very positive information that came out of that. So I think that will help give you a sense of where we're at. But we have, you know, we have a plan and a number, we have a number of projects, we have planned on where we might, where we might be. I think for where we are at in the process, I think we're in pretty good shape in terms of the great work that the committee has been doing thus far. And now as we go into the next phase of that, things will probably feel like they're picking up the pace. And then in terms of our dollar amount, how we're pushing it up, we're working in scenarios with our financial advisors. So we're going to tax impact and different strategies about how we make accounts. But a lot's going to, a lot is just going to be driven, driven on what is it we're actually pursuing or hoping to build. So, so some of those things we just, we have planned on.
I think I can add that that's why this is such a long and involved process. It's really trying to figure out, again, you're, you're at a seminal moment. You have more kids coming likely unless something drastic changes in the world and you're going to have to do something. It's a matter of what resources are you going to have to accomplish that and then what can be done with those resources? So that's, stay tuned. Between now and April, we hope to have more complete answers for you.
And at some point, we'll, we'll talk about tax impact and the future scenarios in the next couple of months. So in fact, we did so many of that in our executive finance committee today. This is a crucial beginning discussion.
Operating levies, when they're just straight renewals, have almost always passed over the last year, couple, several years in Minnesota. So putting a bond on, up to the voters will be a very different challenge. Will require a lot more communication. People need to really understand, you know, what we're asking them to invest in. So we have a lot of work ahead of us.
If I may, do you mind?
Go ahead.
We were, one thing, one of the things we were encouraged to do was to, within our own communities, all 90 of us, to kind of make it known that we're a part of this so that we could get feedback from most people that were in and around every day. And the reason I bring that up is I think Dr. Kasprchek said, hit it right on the head and said, the what is really going to determine. I think that that's what most of the people, most of those 90 people are hearing from the people that we're talking to in the community. The what is really going to influence any hope for success. And so that's one thing we're really going to be thinking hard about as we go into the next few months.
Mr. Jett?
Why don't I, picking up what you said, Tim, in terms of communication and so forth, how much more involved is going to be compared to an operating levy? Obviously, I mean, it would seem that the larger the dollar amount we're talking here compared to what we've seen in operating levies, and we're talking exponentially probably more than what we've dealt with. Based on what other districts that have gone through major capital projects have done, are we, do you think at all we could be too compressed in terms of timeline? I mean, I think we need to move as quickly as we can with prudence, yet I'm wondering, you know, if we're almost getting too late in the game as far as getting that education out there and that word out there and so forth. Because, you know, if we're acting on this board in July, that leaves roughly, what, four months or so to really lay the groundwork. I mean, there's things that obviously laying the groundwork we're doing now, but I mean, really putting our feet to the pavement, so to speak, and giving the word out there is what that is.
Well, when setting that timeline, we did a lot of research and had a lot of conversations with experts in the field about what was a reasonable timeline. Paul and Sal being experts in this field were really informative to us. Jason Peterson from Cross Anderson and John Hewnig have worked on dozens and dozens of school bonds and so they have a pretty good sense of it. They felt pretty confident in our timeline and so we marched forward. Do you have any comments on that?
Yeah, there's probably more going on than, than you realize. Obviously, these meetings are disseminating information. You have this large group of 90 people out there talking in the community. We've done a couple of board reports. The surveys actually help to inform people. So not that they're telling them what you're going to do, the public, what you're going to do, but they start to say, hey, you're looking at facilities. So all of those things lead up to that. And you certainly don't want to start from square one in, in July or August, but it really does make sense. Most referendums are, the campaign part of it is more like six to eight weeks. And so it puts you in a great timeline for that. Our goal is to make sure that the community is aware that something's going on and helps to build the conversation around the background of that. But you really want to go out and pitch the referendum or talk and inform people about the referendum at that time. So, and again, I would just say that virtually every district of your size, about a year of planning is, is about right, which is exactly what we've been working on.
So campaign, then basically, the campaign, we're not talking much if any more than what we typically would see in operating.
From a time standpoint, the intensity and what you do is probably different, but yeah.
There's other strategies. In fact, we had a phone conference today with a group that's going to help us with some strategies in terms of communicating. Once we have, once we have potential solutions outlined, we'll help us communicate that broadly. So not only to communicate what we're doing, but also to provide this feedback to, to make what we present ultimately in July, which you won't begin, will be the person who sees it, but to make it even better and have a community morale there if it's going in. So that will happen in the next few months, too.
Mr. Lee?
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to hear from maybe some of the other committee members. I know I live on the north end, so most of the people that I hear from are shamaning that bit to see something built and because we see everything being built around the housing. For those of you that run communities that live on the southern end, do you feel like your, is the intensity, do they, are people feeling like they're seeing that the schools are, need change, that they're at capacity, or is it just now becoming a realization for them to take into account the southern end?
I know our kids go to school together. Want to say to that?
Hi, I'm Jason Leeder. I was on the Community Spaces. I have a sunrise in one of our late years. I feel as the year older, I think you, you start feeling that pinch because sunrise is about at capacity. And looking at high school at South Campus, I'm wondering if that's going to be, and it's necessary for changes. I don't think it's nearly as intense as probably as Hugo because they drive further for everything. You know, if we come up with solutions that say, hey, we're going to build a high school close to Lion Lakes, well, you might see a little more intensity from somebody like me who lives down there, but.
Do you feel like your neighbors, the people that you talk to, feel the same way?
I live, my neighborhood doesn't have a lot of kids, so I worry about that there's a lot of retirees there that might not think, hey, I don't have kids, I don't have to worry about it. Those might be the people we need to go convince. Yeah, we're, you know, I have friends who live in Hugo and they have, there's, and then the neighborhood's filled with kids from kindergarten all the way up through high school now. I probably have six kids in my neighborhood or around my kid's age. Yeah, and that's just because that's an aging community. Those of you who grew up in this town, this, it's kind of reversed when I was a kid, the south end was growing. I live over on this end of town where things were a little aged and now it's reversed. So, but I think the key is, we've been talking about is, it's, there's 90 different communities that use our schools. I think we've got to make sure everybody looks at it as, you know, not just my backyard, it's your backyard, your backyard. We need to make sure we're all, get people on board.
Yeah. This is kind of, right off, again, for the record. I would say if the intensity isn't around capacity so much, although everyone recognizes that the schools are at or at capacity, they're smaller schools, right? So it's more pronounced when they feel it. I would say the conversations are really centered around sense of community. Who are we? If I talk to my older neighbors, it's a lot about, I don't want to go back to the way things were, the animosity between the different communities and subsets.
You mean, you have two different high schools?
Yeah, the two different high schools. Yeah, just, there's a lot of animosity, I think, back in the 80s. Talked to a lot of my older neighbors about that. And just a sense of, just broader community, knowing that there are demographic, socioeconomic differences between the different communities of White Bear Lake. What does that mean for us? So that's really where the conversations, at least in my camp, have been centered. And I think my, my friends who've been a part of this, who live on the south side. But of course, you know, capacity is everything and I think everyone knows that there needs to be a solution on the north side. I think that's sort of a, I hate to use the word no duh moment. Everyone knows that. But then it's what will unite us? What's that lightning rod? You know, the seminal moment of what do we do with it is going to be the ticket.
I really think that's very true. I live in the south end as well. I'm a river year old, right? And it's, I'm three houses away from, there are some kids in my neighborhood who, their families have a lot of difficulty. But I think that there is enough interest in White, in White Bear as a community and they don't want to go back to that. And I think also that how you ask the question is very critical. So how you, how you craft that question on the ballot, because people have two responses. They can't elaborate on an opinion, they're asking yes or no. So how you frame that question on the ballot is incredibly important because money follows mission. And if you can, if you can craft that question and present your mission in a statement that's clear and concise, then I think, I think there will be momentum behind a ballot issue or ballot question.
And I live on the south side, too. I would say, I would only echo what everybody else has been saying. Community, people don't want to split community. Yeah, well, we live on the south side of White Bear Lake, but we love our Hugo neighbors. I mean, half of our kids' friends live here, right? And everybody has accepted that something has to be done. And it's not, not even just a Hugo problem. I mean, we, we do see that, you know, I, my, my one daughter goes to Matoska and yeah, they're, they're busting at the seams of having to turn people away because they're just not in the room. I mean, it's, I, I think everybody really accepts that something has to be done. And so, I mean, the, the climate, I think, is kind of right for something to be done. Just, we, we all, we all love our communities. We all love our Badness Heights neighbors and our Hugo neighbors and, and everybody else in between. And so we all want to, we all want to stay together.
Mr. Johnson?
Just had one question. There's lots of things that we've talked about over the years that I worked at White Bear at North Campus and at Mariner and at Lake Erie's. So I've seen a lot of different things and my kids graduated in 93 and 97. And as we look at what is best and we've got all kinds of things, I'm just wondering, when do we hit the point where we look at what our space limits us to? You know, as we wish we could build, you know, the mega model or something, but we only have, let's say, 50 acres. And I just made that up. But I know White Bear is space short. So at what point do we look at that as you craft what's suggested? And I'm asking Tim, I guess.
We're at that point. To look at what the limits of our space, what are our space limits and then what solutions can occur within those space limits. It's a challenge this district's faced for a lot of years and hasn't tackled. And so now's the time to tackle it. And so we bring expert architects on board who really know how to use space and have an understanding of what's possible to help guide us through that.
One of the difficult parts about that is there's not really a, a black and white answer to that. It really is a question of not if you can do it, but what are the consequences of doing it? So you can fit quite a large building on a relatively small site, but you limit parking and field use, for instance. So it's really about trying to come up with some metrics and understanding whether or not what you're doing is a good investment for the long term.
Mr. Dean?
Subsigo, we're working on it.
Yep, we're working on it, yep.
Now.
Okay, so I have been going way back to where, you know, in terms of the bond referendum, the timeline, I've seen in some things where a very lengthy timeline can be a detriment. So I, I think we're on track with, you know, there's been a lot of plan. So I, I think we're on track with, you know, there's been a lot of plan going into this and we're already in the White Bear press that we've purchased land. So I think it's on people's radar, like something's going on. And then another thing, you know, in terms of the funding, and I don't know if anyone can, you know, if this is doable, kosher, whatever, but I was at a conference and there was a, a district reporting how they built a field house. And they worked with the city, and the city did a one percent sales tax to help them build a field house. I mean, the sub-referendum price was talking, I can go back and look at my notes, but in terms of certainly with non-referendum, but are there other options for funding facilities? It was just interesting, I didn't know that, that we could do that, but the superintendent was talking about how fantastic that was in terms of their athletic facilities.
Well, that would have been a partnership with the city. The city of their own support have done that. We have not had that level, had that level of discussion. We've certainly been in touch with our municipal leaders, but met that, that level of conversation. But certainly we talked about partnerships.
Because I noticed it came out in that one of the committees to pursue more community partnerships and things like that, because there, there's certainly a bond referendum, but there's always ways to look at funding also. And then going to Marge's statement about space, but doesn't that come down to where we look at aging buildings? Is it worth propping up an aging building or using that space to build something new? I mean, that's, that might be something else that comes up. So there's, there's lots of things going along with saying, okay, we're limited to space, but there are creative ways to think about how to use our space.
I would say that's been part of our, that's been part of our conversation, absolutely.
And I think that was it.
So any other questions from the board? I actually want to make sure that I offer you any opportunity, if there's any other questions, comments. Speak now. We'll be back in, I know we'll be back in April to continue to talk and get the next steps. With that, I will thank you all for your work and thank you very much for the information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Then we'll move on to our next discussion item B3, which is the overview of the fiscal year 2019 revised budget.
Thank you. And joining me tonight is Mr. Wazork, Tom Wazork, our Director of Finance. He's just providing you an updated version, paper version of what was in the electronic packet that you received going, that you received for tonight, along with the summary document. That might be helpful for you as these budget documents can be a little bit overwhelming. The annual budget process is pretty predictable. Each May we bring to the board a proposed preliminary budget for the following school year. In June, we asked the board to approve the preliminary budget. The school year starts and sometimes that adjustment changes. The audit comes in December and that informs us of some changes that may be, need to be made to the budget. And that brings us to January, when we bring to the board at the work session, the proposed revised budget for the current school year. So that's what we're doing tonight. And in February, we'll ask you to, to approve the revised twenty eighteen, nineteen school year budget. So with me tonight is Director of Finance, Tom Wazork, and he's going to lead a discussion, lead you through the revised budget, and there'll be opportunity for questions and discussion. Mr. Wazork.
Thank you, Board. I'll, I give you a packet of three sheets and I'm going to concentrate on my, my discussion on the last two, which would be the, the summary and then the, the spreadsheet that shows the numbers. So I will start with the revenue side of things. When we approved the budget last June, our preliminary budget was a hundred and twelve million, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand. And now our, the revised revenue budget for the general fund is a hundred and thirteen million, five hundred and fifty-six thousand. The increase is basically coming from three areas. One, our, one, which is number line four, is that the, the property taxes, I'm adjusting that, that number up to the actual based on the levy that was put into place in seventeen, payable for the eighteen, nineteen year. And that was a million dollars. On line five, we've increased our investment earnings by sixty thousand. Last year, we had approximately three hundred and forty thousand. We are preliminary budget two hundred and sixty-five. Conservatively, I'm budgeting three hundred and twenty-five thousand. So that's up sixty thousand dollars. And then on line nine, where our preliminary budget, we had two million eight for our federal grants, and now I'm, I'm increasing that by forty-eight thousand to bring it up to two million, eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand. So that would, those three items increasing a little over a million dollars, bring it up, brings it up to the hundred and thirteen million, five hundred and sixty-six, five hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. So any questions about the revenue side of things?
Questions regarding revenue? Okay.
Okay. Now on the expenditures, based on the results from during the audit and what, that we, we were over budget this last year, and because of the, the items that actually put us over budget, that's probably going to occur again this year. So I'm revising or increasing the expenditure budget by a little over four million dollars. The reasons for the, those that increase is that we're being revised is that we had higher than anticipated salary settlements and those cover two years. And then the, another change that cost the general fund was that the, there was a change in how much money we can pull out of our OPEB trust for retiree health, health benefits. And in the past, when we were fully insured, we could draw out the actual premiums that were paid now for retirees. Now we can only draw out the actual claims because we're self-insured. So that ended up costing us six hundred thousand dollars this last year. And that was a change that occurred in FY eighteen. So that brings our net deficit between our increased revenues and increasing the expenditures to three, three and a half million dollars. Oh, yeah, oh, that's right. And then also, we had higher than budgeted special education expenses. So that attributed then to our over expenditure from last year, and of course, that's being carried over into this year.
Important thing to understand, too, is, is you see an increase of special ed expenditures, but when you look at the top under line eight for special ed revenue, that's not increased. So the state formula for special ed, the current formula caps, caps us at that amount. So any additional expenditures, special education expenditures create or added to our cross subsidy, which is the process of pulling money out of your general fund to offset special education expenditures. So those three areas, I think salaries, OPEB, and then finding special ed expenditures.
You mind if we ask questions in between?
Yeah, well, then I'm going to just add one item, one more item to that. In addition to that, in FY eighteen, then, special education revenue was prorated because the state hadn't appropriated enough money to cover the, the, their expense to us. So we lost another few hundred thousand dollars because of that, so.
So everyone looking at a, a well, million dollar difference of what we're paying for special ed services and what we get from the state. I don't see that changing soon. So what's, if we keep drawing out a general fund, what?
That's a great question for our legislators and a question that, that every education association in Minnesota is challenging legislators with right now. When they made the change to the funding formula, I think they thought they were helping in some cases, actually ended up hurting us. It increased our cross subsidy. Some districts were helped, some were hurt. We happen to be in the hurting side. So that, that cross subsidy is a big challenge. It's the biggest challenge we have in school finance right now.
But what if that doesn't change?
If that doesn't change, we'll continue to meet the needs of all of our kids. But it's going to be through continually using general ed funds to do it. So the law is right to provide the services that we're providing, the funding is wrong. And our challenge is to continue to communicate with legislators and school board members commuting with legislators that they need to address the cross subsidy. And you may have caught Dr. Kasmercheck was interviewed by Star Tribune a week or two ago and made a really strong statement to the importance of addressing the cross subsidy.
So do we know, I'm assuming so, Monamida and those little audience, they have the same things happening to their budgets as well?
Yeah, it's different district by district. But you would see the same level of cross subsidy, similar levels of cross subsidy in surrounding school districts.
We are, I have the stats in front of me, but in terms of the cross subsidy, we are one of the metro districts that probably has one of the highest per student cross subsidies of forty-eight or seventy-nine districts. Probably correct me if I'm mistaken, five or six or so in terms of that total amount. So what are, what are things we can do? I think it's a, you know, when we're looking at long-term and we're looking at presenting a balanced budget to you as a board, the special education question is not going to go away and there's only so much money to go around. And so there will just have to be decisions made about what we're spending our money. So that's a, that's a real obvious answer to your question. Long-term, well, I think statewide, what's happened, this is a, a portion in that same article, what's happened largely in the state, you could argue that these local operating levies that districts have in place are in place largely to make up for the cross subsidy. And so it isn't like there's, there's a, I quit using the term excess and I actually think the Department of Education is quitting the term excess. It used to be called excess operating levies. We don't use excess any longer because there are operating levies that are in place where we can provide largely the basic services that we need for our students. So it is a state, it's a major statewide issue, it's a, it's a national issue. And we are, we are, we're experiencing it perhaps worse than some of the districts we're experiencing. So, so it's a challenge. I don't know what the answer is right now. I'm hopeful that there, there's maybe some intent behind changing the way it's looking right now. But I think Tim pointed it out, you look at the, you look at the special ed revenue and you look at the actual, on line eight, eleven point nine million compared to the actual for fiscal eighteen at twelve point zero million. And yet our spend, so what is that, five thousand? And our expenses went up one point six or one point seven million. That, that's a large, that's a huge problem for us. So what can we do? We can try to control our expenses. I'm saying when a kid comes into our district, we are going to get that child everything that here she is, everything that's written in their individual education plan, because it's the right thing to do and it's the law. But the funding isn't there. There isn't additional funding for, for us. We're at cap, we don't see additional revenue. I'll mention a proration factor. What that means is if normally we would get, maybe we would have only got twelve point four million on that particular year, but because the state, the overall state budget, there was only so much to go around, so we only got ninety-seven percent of our revenue that we should have gotten. So then we did less and that's a, that's a statewide issue. So that did us as well. The system, the funding system for special education is not working.
A hats off to Lisa Orin and her team for really working, turning over every stone to find available revenue. Are there, are there revenue pieces we're missing and are there expenditures that we can be more efficient about without reducing services? And one of those areas that we've been really working hard on is around transportation. Spend a lot of, a lot of transportation dollars, a lot of special ed dollars transporting students from other districts or to other services. And so how can we be most efficient with those services and try to keep our expenditures from increasing?
Another challenge districts have, and I know we talked about this before, and Lisa China and my left base, but the main, so essentially, districts from one year to the next has to spend just a little more on special education at a minimum. And if you're to reduce expenses, you actually have to, you actually have to present that as to why you need that. So, so we, we, you, I think the answer is, I think controlling both sides of the equation, it's maximizing revenues and it's also looking at expenses and seeing where we can, where we can become more efficient, provide services more efficiently, however you want to term that. But there's also some limits as to how much of that we can do, so.
And inflationary rate, when applied to special ed services, is about five or six percent. So it's a, it's a, it's a hard one to stay ahead of. Okay, well.
Tom, I missed specifically the increase for the special ed. Is it more students when you were going through that one? Is it more students that we were going to have than what we were anticipating?
No, it's staff.
Higher level of service?
It's staff, it's staff. Well, it's a little bit of both, but, but the, on the expenditure side, it's the staff to provide the services.
To roughly about the same level of number of students or?
We had a significant increase over the previous year via the capture rate you would generally expect given the enrollment increase to the general population.
And across subsidies, I sit on nine sixteen board, too, and that is a huge topic of discussion there as well. When nine sixteen, especially.
Lisa's done a really good job of analyzing our student counts. And we are reversing the trend of losing students in open enrollment. We're, we're starting to gain more and more students in open enrollment. And we're finding we're getting, because we have a really good reputation in our special ed department, we're capturing a lot of special education students through open enrollment. And they often come with significant expenditures. And not all of that's billable to, back to the district.
One of the strategies, too, is sort of nine sixteen, if you send twenty students, these are roughly, how many students do we send? Okay, so one hundred and forty. Well, if we could potentially reduce that number to a hundred and twenty or a hundred and ten because of programming we could offer, we could probably offer a program of much less than that. So, so part of the facility discussion is why, why might we need different facilities to potentially offer more of that specialized program in housing could probably be much more cost effective. So we had a conversation with the nine sixteen folks, they're all on board with that. There's a waiting list. So anything any of you can do to help invite more students that are happy to have had those conversations. So though that's one, that's up to your question, that's one of the things that we can do is fight, fight for those expenses and so on, that'd be opposite or one programs versus contracting those. That's a specific example.
Mr. Wilson.
Mostly for the way, I guess, but anyone who would care to feel it. Have our, have our legislative legislators issued public statements or opinions regarding the cross subsidy?
I think we have various supportive legislators and Senator Beaker has asked for some very specific information. So I would comment on that. There was a conversation with him, with area of your special ed directors.
Directors, we're getting together and, and then, you know, we sit on some talking points to all of them.
So I think there's a willingness and I think it's by person, so.
There was pressure to do it during the last session, it didn't get done. So we're hoping that it's higher on their priority list for this session.
We'll continue. Just on, on the special ed note, one of the things that hasn't increased, even though we are providing more services, is the, the federal side of special ed. That's our biggest bucket of federal dollars is about a million six for special, ninety-four one forty-two, which is another special ed program. But those dollars haven't increased appreciably over time. But those dollars haven't increased appreciably over time. Matter of fact, I think our, of our total budget, it's still at, what, six, eight percent? But originally, when that was put into place, I think the article said it was, federal government was supposed to fund that at forty percent. Well, that hasn't happened ever since the law was passed.
You're spending about eighteen percent.
Yeah.
That's four.
Yeah. So, okay, we'll move on. So on, on line twenty-nine, that shows where we have a, expenditures over revenues of three and a half million. We are going to be using, for this year, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars of assigned fund balance, which means that our, on line fifty-three, our unassigned fund balance is projected to go down two and a half million dollars. So on line sixty, at the end of this year, with our revised budget, our unassigned fund balance would be approximately eleven, eleven point seven million dollars. That would put our fund balance at ten percent of our expenditures, which is slightly below our twelve and a half percent target. So any questions on the general fund revenue, our expenditure side for this fiscal year at this point, other than what we've already talked about?
And that reflects the, the, or the fund, fund balance being at ten percent reflects what was shared with, at the audit report in December. And so that's a challenge that we face now over the next couple of years, is how do we get that fund balance back within the policy limits set by the school board?
Questions, comments? Okay.
Let's talk about nutritional services.
Yep. Okay, and then down below, from line sixty-three to the end, we have the nutritional services budget. From our projected budget there, we're increasing about a hundred thousand dollars, and that's for equipment and some staffing changes that they're meeting in the nutrition world. And we'll still have a healthy fund balance in, in that fund of just over half a million dollars. And then under community services, we're increasing both the revenues and expenditures, but more revenues than expenditures, so their projected deficit that they had before of two hundred and sixty-seven will drop to about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. So.
If you recall, last year, we increased expenditures in community ed with the expectation that revenue would trail, but really revenue was higher than we expected in community services, so that, that moved the way we thought it would, even a little better.
Okay. All right. And then for, for projections of FY twenty through twenty-two, the assumptions that we're making in this model are that we are projecting one hundred additional students each year in twenty, FY twenty and then FY twenty-one, and then the formula increasing one and a half percent each year. So, and that's what the legislature now is working on. And then are increasing our expenditures by two percent, and also we're reflecting budget reductions in FY twenty of a million seven hundred and fifty thousand and in FY twenty-one, one point one million dollars. That, doing those two things with the, assuming the revenues and those level of expenditures with reductions would increase our fund balance up to the twelve and a half percent at the end of the next fiscal year. Things that could, the assumptions that could affect, or things that could affect those assumptions would be our actual enrollment numbers, both plus or minus, and at this point in time, we have been on the plus side of things and we're anticipating that's going to continue. The legislative changes, the fund, whatever the, the state does with the form allowance, are they going to give us one percent or are they going to give us two and a half percent? We're thinking it's going to be about a one and a half. If it comes into two, that's good for us, or then anything over that one and a half, we would essentially increase our fund balance by, or something come up, come, come back to you with another expenditure increase or of some kind. And then another option that could hap, or a thing that could happen was been, would be that our expenditures increased for some reason more than our two percent, and we would have to look at how that's going to affect, or we have the revenue to cover it. So the end result was that FY twenty, we could have a balanced budget or increase our fund balance back up to the twelve and a half percent, and essentially by doing that, we're balancing it so that we cover that deficit. And then going forward, we'll hopefully then the state will come up with the funding that we need.
Questions regarding the revised budget? Okay. So the next steps for this would be, we'll vote on the revised budget at the February end.
February Board meeting.
November eleventh.
Yep.
And then in May, you'll bring us back the fiscal year budget for?
For twenty, yep.
And you'll vote on that in June.
And vote on that in June. All right.
Thank you.
We're now here watching our next discussion on D four, which is the twenty eighteen residential survey results. Welcome, Chris Leatherman, Morris Leatherman.
Morris Leatherman.
Morris Leatherman.
Company.
Yeah, just right here.
And I've got, I've got a hard copy. We wanted to give this work out to you tonight so that you're having the opportunity to really benefit, and you're walking us through the results so that you can, you can provide the proper context and results.
I put your foot between South St. Paul. When I left South St. Paul School District, it was fourteen. When I pulled in here, it was four, so we had nine degrees in thirty minutes. And the wind's blowing, you can't tell if it's snowing or not, so you guys canceled, right? Yeah. I think it doesn't break that.
Back right in.
Super. It's a.
Welcome.
Thank you. So I'd say it's a pleasure to be here with you. It's not you, it's the weather outside. But anyways, we're here going through this. We'll talk about the methodology. We'll talk about methodology and demographics, and then I'll see if you have any questions before we dive into the survey results specifically. But just to refresh everybody, we spoke with four hundred randomly selected residents across the district. The interviews were done before the holidays, so between December fourth and December nineteenth. The average interview time was twenty-two minutes. We had over five percent of the sample, I believe it was six percent, stay on the phone with us for over forty-five minutes, that's of their own volition, district historians oftentimes that we run into, that are more verbose than the average resident. The non-response rate, once we found them at home during the holiday season, and we overcome the challenges of answering machines by leaving messages, introducing ourselves. And with the district putting communications out there that you've hired us, that it makes it more likely that a person will answer their call coming in once they recognize the number. It's not a blocked phone number. If it's a landline, as much as Morris Leatherman fits on caller ID comes up, and if it's a cellphone, it's a six-five-one number. And so the non-response rate, and I believe forty-five percent of the interviews were completed by appointment, when it's convenient for the person to take the survey, as opposed when it's convenient for us to give the survey. So the four hundred sample is projectable to within plus or minus five percent in ninety-five out of a hundred cases. And I always put cellphones up on there, the percentage and distribution, everybody wants to know. We've been including cellphones in samples since two thousand and eight. So the breakdown in the community, forty-three percent indicated that they were cellphone-only households, twelve percent had landline only, and forty-five percent had both landline and cellphone. So the demographics of the survey, we asked a series of demographics at the end, not only to, we can cut the data, look at questions, attitude differences. Yes, sir?
We've got to have district-wide, not just whether there are over thirty thousand residents, right?
Correct.
Four hundred seems like a low representative sample to me. Yet I'm sure it is because that's what it misses.
Yeah.
But how would you allow four hundred being sufficient?
A four hundred sample is, the, the percent of your universe does not determine what your margin of error is. A four hundred sample in the White Bear Lake School District or a four hundred sample across the state of Minnesota is plus or minus five percent. Now, you could take a semester course on how statistics works, and it's just like if you go to a six-twenty-five sample, it goes to plus or minus four percent. As long as your universe is over two thousand, you don't have what's called a small sample correction. We can talk to fewer people to get the margin of error. But the key is, is that everybody has an opportunity to be included, as long as they have a cellphone or a landline. And that's really the key differentiation, well, there's two key differentiations between mail-out and internet surveys. Because the first differentiation is they self-select in. You have to take an action in order to click on the link or to mail a survey. And there's also an intrinsic bias, because with an internet survey, it shocks people that in Minnesota, ten to fifteen percent of people have no internet access. And it's a very specific demographic, so how are they going to access an internet survey? I joke on the mail-out survey, saying millennials don't know where the mailbox is, much less, no offense, the younger generation doesn't know where the mailbox is, much less will they go to the mailbox, take out a survey, fill it out, put a stamp on it, and put it back in the mail. And so still, the best way to get a statistically valid sample is via telephone, as long as you use cellphones. Now, the four hundred is also arrived on because it's a cost benefit. Our costs are driven by how many people we talk to and how many questions we ask them. And so the, for the purposes in working with school districts, and we've been doing this for twenty-five, thirty years, I could charge fifty percent more to do a six-twenty-five sample, but it's not responsible to say it's worth fifty percent more to get an additional point in the margin of error.
I think.
Yep. So if we look at the demographics of the community, the first portion of the demographic chart is how long has the resident lived in the school district? You see, you have thirty-one percent that have been here for ten years or less, you have twenty-one percent that have been here for twenty, over, or thirty years. The average comes out to about seventeen years in the district, a little bit longer than we typically see in our suburban studies, you know, and this depends if it's high growth or a very stable community. And you have a mix here with White Bear Lake and Hugo and everything, so the seventeen year skew's a little bit older than typical. Eighteen percent indicated that they had preschoolers in the household, thirty-one percent indicated that they had children currently in the school district, and sixty-five percent were complete empty nesters. Forty percent indicated that they had relatives attending the school district also, so nieces, nephews, grandchildren, that sort of thing. So there's a connection beyond just if they had a child themselves, and they also have family members. Seventeen percent were renters. You can see the self-appraised home value on there. That always skews a little higher than the actual county assessment. But the average comes in right at about two hundred and eighty thousand on the average house, with just under one in five being renters. If we continue with the demographics, the age distribution, pretty much twenty percent in each of the categories, twenty-one percent under the age of thirty-four, twenty percent over the age of sixty-five. The median education experience in the district is just short of college graduation. You almost have a flat majority, college graduates, forty-seven percent, thirty-one percent, some college experience, and then twenty-two percent high school graduates or less. The financial stressed versus the financially comfortable. Now, my, I will put a caveat on here, that the survey was done before the holidays, and with the yo-yoing of the stock market, we've already seen a change in surveys that have, I actually ran this afternoon in another school district. You were pretty typical, the thirty-five percent financially stressed, it tends to be between thirty, thirty-five percent. It appears now across the state, it's growing to thirty-five to forty percent. Just this general uneasiness, shall we say. Gender, four percent more women than men, that's intentional. We balanced the gender on this intentionally, because if we just talked with whoever answered the phone, we'd have seventy percent women. Men don't answer the phone. So we asked for the, talk to the person whose birthday is closest to the date we're calling, and that overcomes the gender bias in those that answer the phone in a nice way. And then you can see the distribution by area. White Bear Lake, thirty-seven percent, eighteen percent in Vadniss, nineteen percent in the township, eighteen percent in Hugo, and eight percent of the rest of the district. So before we go into the results, any questions on methodology, demographics? Good?
Good.
All right. We asked the first set of questions in the district. Basically, you're at a point in, looking at a referendum, that it's important to test the atmospherics, because if there are, if there are concerns in the atmospherics in the district, you have time to change those perceptions and feelings. And we know that on Election Day, you want people to walk in with a blank slate. How much does this cost and what am I getting? What's the cost benefit analysis, instead of bringing baggage in on cuts or feelings about the board or communications or spending, what have you? So this first set of questions that we're going to go through really are looking at the atmospherics in the district. And so we start with a very overall broad question. How would you rate the quality of education here in the White Bear Lake schools? Overall, ninety percent rated it favorably, nine percent rated it only fair or poor. Very strong. But what differentiates school districts and differentiate across Minnesota is the excellent rating. Minnesotans are also very difficult graders. Oftentimes, good is good enough and you'll never be excellent. And so the excellent, the average excellent rating right now across the state is twenty percent. So you're almost double the norm that we see. So people not only feel favorably, you have twice as many people feeling enthusiastic about the quality of education here, rating it as excellent. What do folks like most? This is open-ended, we haven't delved into any topics with them yet, and so we ask a couple of open-ended questions up front. And your residents fall into the three typical categories that we see, and tips a little bit more towards the personnel side. Twenty-eight percent talked about the great teachers in the district. Then if we combine good academics and excellent academics, you have twenty-three percent that are talking about the academics happening in the classroom specifically, and then you have twenty-four percent between variety of programming and curriculum, going into that silo of programs and curriculum. So it skews a little bit more towards staff, but you have to be cognizant that when folks are rating quality of education here, they're considering all three. This does vary from district to district. Some districts are just extraordinary, I just was down in South St. Paul, they're focused on teachers and curriculum and programs. Other districts, it just matters, especially on the west side of the metro, they're focused on academic quality and the test scores, those sorts of things. So it does vary. Your district, it really is equal between all three. Now, if we ask what they like most, we, we follow up with what's the most serious issue facing the district. Keep in mind, this is open-ended, and so we consider anything over twenty percent to be a major concern, if one in five residents are coalescing around that response. You don't have anything that meets that threshold. You have four that hit double digits. Large class sizes at fourteen percent, a lack of funding at fourteen percent, high taxes at thirteen, and lack of discipline at eleven. So nothing rises to the point that this is a major issue in the district. Put some norms around these to give you some idea of where they fall. The large class sizes varies greatly, depending on the growth rate in a community and the most recent bond referendum and what it solved or fixed. So there's variation there. Lack of funding is a little bit higher than we're typically seeing. There is a concern here, and we're going to go more in depth a little bit with the adequacy of funding in the district that we see elsewhere, that's typically in the high single digits, seven, eight, nine percent. High taxes is a little bit under as a top-of-the-mind response. That typically, over the last two years, it's been pretty stable between fifteen and twenty percent. But we'll go into taxes and their perceptions a little bit later on also. And lack of discipline, you're right at the suburban norm. On this one, we, we cut the state, we, it's not just outstate, we look at the suburban norm. Normally, one in ten residents are concerned about discipline, so that's right there. At the bottom, though, the nothings, these are boosters. They see no problems whatsoever with the school district, it's utopia here. And the norm on this one is eight percent. So you're more than double the boosters. Now, that's a great thing to have. They're supportive of referendum, they're supportive of spending, they're supportive of the education program, every- So, you're more than double the boosters. Now, that's a great thing to have. They're supportive of referendum, they're supportive of spending, they're supportive of the education program, everything. But as you're leading into discussions on a referendum, there does need to be awareness that there are needs in the district also. And we're going to see that come through with discussions and communications. How do folks feel about the quality of education compared to three years ago? On this one, we're always looking at the ratio, the better to worse. Twenty-six percent said better, eight percent said worse. The threshold, we're looking at this one, is two and a half to one. And so, you're better than three to one. Folks feel that the quality of education in the schools are moving in the right direction here. Now, how do they feel about the quality compared to neighboring school districts? Well, folks always want to be, feel good about themselves in comparison to others, it's just what we do. And so, it's a little bit higher standard. We're looking at a three-to-one margin, we're hoping for. Here, three and a half to one. So, not only are residents demon that the district looks, does well historically, looking back three years, that you're moving in the right direction, they also feel that competitively with your neighbors, you're better than they are. How does a district do in meeting student learning needs? Now, this is a four-part. They can answer four ways. They could say, all students' needs are being met, most, some, or very few. The "all" is a very stringent standard. Very few districts go over fifty percent. So, the fifty-five percent is very strong in comparison. Now, following up with those that said, most, some, or very few, we ask, is there a type of student whose learning needs are not being met? That's what's in the upper right-hand portion of the chart. And you can see, there's a very specific group that folks are focused on. And this has shifted over the years. Twenty years ago, it used to be, everybody was worried about gifted and talented. There's not enough for gifted and talented. Ten years ago, it was average students. You were taking care of the high end, and the lower end of the spectrum, and the middle was getting lost. Now, district after district, the concern has become, for the underachiever, the struggling, special ed, diverse section. And so, you're not atypical that, as a concern. Those percents reflect the forty-one percent that said most, some, or only few. So, that is fifteen percent of forty-one percent. Okay? The key takeaway being here, though, you have a flat majority of fifty-five percent that say you're meeting the stringent standard, of meeting all learning needs. Now, we went through a series of characteristics with the school district, and asked them to rate them excellent, good, the blue bars; only fair or poor, the red bars. And we see a sea of blue instead of a red riptide. And especially on items, if we go back and think about what folks like most about the school district. Teachers, programming, and the academics. The variety of course offerings leads the list at ninety to four, followed by the quality of teaching staff, followed by the academic achievement, and the basic academic coursework. Interestingly enough, what normally leads in school districts is that you're fifth place, and that's achievement and athletics. So, your folks are really prioritizing giving high ratings to the things that they say they like most about the school district. Now, where do we see higher red? There's one that hits thirty percent. It's about five percent higher than the norm we're seeing right now, and that's student behavior and discipline. That's typically about twenty-five percent. So, something to flag, it's not at the forty, forty-five percent level. And also, the personalizing education hit twenty percent. And let's talk about that when we get to class sizes, specifically. Something to flag, and it'll be up in a couple charts. On technology?
Okay.
Absolutely. Feel free to interrupt me.
The student behavior discipline, what does that, I'm not quite sure I understand what the, what the means is.
It was asked, it's asked specifically. We go through a list of characteristics. And so, we just ask, how would you rate, would you rate?
Excellent or student behavior, or?
It's, it's simply, so, for each of the following characteristics, please tell me if you would rate it excellent, good, only fair, or poor. And the question is student behavior and discipline. So, this one taps into, oftentimes, I will hear, it taps in more to perception than reality. And also, if we're working with a city, people's perception on discipline is like crime. It spills across borders. So, if something bad happens in another school district, oftentimes, you'll get a blip in your school district, and you'll say, well, we didn't have that problem. But, discipline issues cross borders, just like crime does. Feel free to interrupt me. There's a lot of data here, and it's easier to have a question answered, instead of going back twelve slides. Technology. How would, how do folks rate the importance of technology to student learning in this district? Fifty percent said it was absolutely essential. Thirty-five percent said it was very important, for a total of eighty-five percent. Only fifteen percent said somewhat are not too important. The absolutely essential, that fifty percent, is about five points higher than the norm. This has gone down over the last five years. Technology has ebbed and flowed over my career of doing this, as people start to get concerned that technology for technology's sake isn't enough. And so, a lot of districts, about five years ago, this was at sixty, sixty-five percent of people saying absolutely essential. And now, it's kind of a step back, they're going to the very important category, instead of the absolutely essential category. And that's why the norm now on this is forty-five percent. The key on technology, in district after district, it's not enough just to have technology. You have to link it to curriculum, programming, and improving the quality of education in the classroom. People are starting to think that it's just become too much, and that's kind of the change. Now, how do they rate the current technology opportunities in White Bear Lake School District? Very well. Eighty-nine percent rate them positively. I didn't even separate the only fair and poor. I just combined them to four percent, and seven percent were unsure. So, your folks do believe that technology is important to student learning, eighty-five percent. And they also give you very high marks for the technology opportunities being offered. Coming now to class sizes, and I alluded to this with the twenty percent in the previous chart, rating the personalizing education unfavorably. So, it'd be an opportunity to overcome people's concerns on class sizes a bit, because people are starting to realize that cutting class sizes by one or two isn't necessarily going to make a huge difference. And so, what we do with this chart, because we want to tap in and go just beyond people's perceptions on class sizes, and give them a fact. And we tell them specifically, here's the average class size in elementary, here's the average class size in core classes in the middle school, and in core classes in the high school. And we ask them, is this too high, about the right amount, or too low? On elementary school, you have sixty-nine percent indicating that it's about the right amount. Twenty-six percent said it should be lower. Going to middle school, you can see a growing concern. Fifty-five percent say it's about right. Well, forty-two percent say it should be lower. And then, at the high school level, it's an even split, with forty-eight percent indicating lower, and forty-nine percent about average. So, the concern on class sizes is present at the secondary level, for sure. Not so much at the elementary level, at this point in time. Going some, through some specific statements on perceptions with the school district. The first question is, do you think the school district spends taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently? Sixty-eight percent agreed with that statement, twenty-two percent disagreed with that statement. The threshold for this one is about fifty-five percent agreement. So, you're well above it, approaching seventy percent. Do you consider a tax increase only as a last resort, after all other alternatives have been considered? Norm on this one is about fifty-two percent, you're at sixty-five percent. I'm going to skip down a few to, have you spent past referendum funds responsibly? Sixty-seven percent agreed with that statement. Threshold for that is about fifty-five percent. So, on all three of those that we consider financial credibility questions, the district is ten points or higher than the norm. The district has very strong financial credibility in the minds of residents. Now, continuing with this list, we'll go back to, do they believe the schools are a good value for their investment? Absolutely. Almost ninety percent agree with that statement. Is the district held accountable enough for the quality of education? Very strong, eighty-one percent. Norm on that, seventy-five percent. Do you do a good job of involving the community? Seventy-eight percent indicate yes, only seventeen percent no. The norm on that is about seventy-three percent. Do they trust you to do what's right for the children? More than eighty percent. Very strong. Do you provide a safe learning environment? Absolutely. Eighty-nine percent. Is there adequate room for growth in the district schools? Sixty-seven percent agreed with that, seventeen percent disagreed, and seventeen percent were unsure. So, this then is an opportunity for communications, as you discuss classroom space and bond referendum. And then, finally, the last question on the chart, and the first time we kind of dip our toe in a potential referendum, is, the schools are a good investment, and I would support a property tax increase to protect that investment. We haven't told them if it's a bond referendum, an operating levy, if it's fifty cents a month, or fifty dollars a month. They have no idea. This is to understand what core opposition is. And twenty-five percent core opposition is a very manageable number. Anytime that's under thirty percent at the outset, it's a, it's very comfortable that the community's willing to have a discussion about a property tax increase. Now, I mentioned that at the top-of-the-mind response on the most serious issue, thirteen percent said that their concern was property taxes, and that was a little bit lower than the norm. When we talk specifically about property taxes, the bronze-colored bar is their perception of total property taxes. You have fifty-five percent say they're either very high or somewhat high, thirty-nine percent say about average. One percent said low. I always tell the school board I have their names and numbers, and you can give them a call. Fifty-five percent, anytime we go over fifty percent on people's perception of total property tax increase, we consider the district to have a hostile property tax climate, that you have more than a majority saying their taxes are high. Now, is this extraordinarily hostile? No. We actually worked on a referendum last year with a city that had a combined city, a very high and somewhat high property tax level, at seventy-eight percent. That is a very difficult property tax environment. So, it tells us that you're going to have to be cognizant of property, of the amount of the property tax increase. There are very few districts that have a benign tax climate, okay? But, it, the fifty-five percent is a flag. Now, we follow up, and we ask, well, what about your perceptions on school taxes? Well, the good news for the district is, they don't blame you for their animus towards their property taxes. We used to ask, who do you blame? The city, the county. And then, the cities and counties got mad at us for asking the question. So, we don't know who they're blaming, but the, their concern on the, on the high side, what goes from fifty-five to forty-five percent. It's a ten-point drop. So, it's telling us that their animus is not focused on the schools, per se. It's at another government entity. The perception of, are the schools adequately funded? You're a little bit lower on agreement on this question. And this, this has changed through the years, depending on what by any budget gets passed, and what legislators, what legislators are saying about the amount of the increase. A norm on this now is about sixty to sixty-three percent saying yes. So, you're a little bit, have more disagreement. Thirty-three percent saying no, and twelve percent saying unsure. And so, that concern goes back to what we saw in the earlier chart, on the most serious issue facing the district, of a lack of funding being present also. An overall rating of the financial management, then? Fifty-eight percent rated excellent or good. Thirty-one percent only fair, poor, and eleven percent were unsure. Anytime we clear a threshold of fifty percent, combine back with those three previous questions, we feel that the, we can say confidently, the district has strong financial integrity in the minds of residents. Looking at job performance ratings, and with the governance side, with the school board in, the school board specifically, sixty-two percent approve of the job, thirty-one percent disapprove of the job, seven-point higher more approval. The norm on that is about fifty-five percent approval of the school board. Similarly, about ten percent more approval of the superintendent and administration, sixty-six, twenty-eight. So, on both the governance and administration side, you have very strong ratings in the community. And most importantly, I can always tell a district, there's issues in a district, if the school board is rated high, and the administration lower, vice versa. And you can see, these ratings are almost a one-for-one. So, residents see that the governance and administration really is a cohesive entity here in, in the White Bear Lake schools. The closer you get to the students, it's always more positive. So, principals go up to seventy-nine percent, and your teachers hit eighty-seven percent. So, very strong ratings across the board on all four.
Pretty typical numbers for principals and teachers?
The principals are a little bit higher than, than the norm. Teachers, they tend to be in that eighty-five to ninety percent range. So, I mentioned at the outset, we asked a series of questions, looking at the atmospherics. And we can comfortably say that the district's in good shape to have the conversation with the community about potential new funding, for facilities, what have you. Issues of financial management, accountability, involvement, do they trust issues, all of these, all check the box. There, there's no red flag issue out there that needs to be put forward and, and managed, shall we say. So, it really then is up to the details of what's being discussed, and how much it costs for folks. So, before I go into that portion, any questions on the atmospherics, what we've discussed Trying to do a network time killer. No questions? All right. We start out this section, asking, if you heard the district was going to ask for a property tax increase, would you be likely to vote for any property tax increase? Would you be against any property tax increase, or would you be for some and against others? First off, we key in on the for-all versus against-all. You're actually a plus-one. You have one percent more people telling us they'd support anything than oppose anything. Now, over the past two years, we've actually worked on forty-eight referendum questions. Forty-four have passed. The average at the outset of the forty-four passing was a minus-four. They had four percent more negative than positive at the outset. So, a plus is unusual, and it puts, the, the district's willing to have a conversation. But the key is obviously going to be the fifty-one percent persuadable. Now, you also follow the same pattern we've seen over the last few years across the state. This question used to have sixty-five, seventy percent of people persuadable. Now, you have half the people that's minds are made up before they even know what you're talking about. They don't, once again, we don't know if it's a bond referendum or an operating levy. We don't know if it's fifty cents or fifty dollars. They're either for it or against it. And so, that's very typical to what we see now, across the state of Minnesota. We move from the predisposition to our let's-make-a-deal question. And this is just conceptual. If you heard the district was going to ask for a property tax increase, what would be a reasonable amount? And our phoners start out at a random point, how about twelve dollars a month? No, that's too high. How about six dollars a month? Okay, that sounds fine. Or move up the scale, depending on their answer. At the outset, thirty-one percent said nothing. So, the predisposition, we had twenty-four percent say they're against anything, and then we asked for a dollar amount. You kind of flush out the Minnesota nice portion. And that, so, the core opposition not supporting a tax increase is thirty-one percent. Completely manageable. Anytime that's between thirty and thirty-five percent, with all the referendums that we've worked on, we feel the district's in a good position. Now, at the outset, and I actually calculated the specific number, I didn't write it down At the outset, the median monthly property tax increase is just under twelve dollars a month, about eleven dollars and eighty-two cents. Now, that number is not set in stone. That's meant to give you an indication at the outset of what is acceptable. And realizing, the further you go from that, the better case you need to make for it. I always give an example, a few years ago, working with the school- I always give an example, a few years ago, working with the school district, their number came in at about nine dollars and fifty cents a month. But as we broke out all the components of what they were testing, they had a minimum of seventy-five percent support in concept for a property tax increase for everything. They actually went for twenty-eight dollars a month on the average house, and it passed seventy, thirty. So there's elasticity in the number. I've also had a certain district on the northwest side of the metro, that will go unnamed, that actually came in under the number, but it included what we'd call a poison pill, a second sheet of ice. And it became a lightning rod, and it failed. So it's only meant to give indication for you to realize the further variation you have from that number, the greater case needs to be made for the tax increase. Now, going through buildings and facilities, and asking for a rating of excellent, good versus only fair or poor. The elementary school buildings, sixty-seven percent rate them favorably, nineteen percent negatively, fifteen percent unsure. Middle school, sixty-nine percent favorable, thirteen percent unfavorable. High school goes up to seventy-one to eleven, and the athletic facility is seventy-two to four. You can see you have a pretty consistent fifteen to twenty percent that are unsure and unable to rate the facilities. That's a very specific demographic. They're over the age of fifty-five, and so it's an opportunity for more communications. But you can see at the outset, and it's going to be a theme coming up as you go into referendum planning and what's included. Overall, people feel good about the facilities here, but not enthusiastically so, okay? The difference is going to be, it's not going to be a discussion that the buildings are falling down and everything's terrible. They don't believe that. That's not their experience. The question is, is how do you move, and by making improvements to building and facilities, and linking that to the education and programming, how do you move them from good to excellent? To make them enthusiastic, not only about the curriculum, the programs, the education, but that link to facilities also. So do the buildings meet the needs of educating today's children? Seventy-three percent say yes. Nineteen percent say no. But you can see, it's a soft yes. Only twenty-two percent strongly agree with the statement, fifty-one percent say a soft yes. So once again, it's the movement. How do you get, how do the improvements make people say that it's strong yes, that the buildings meet the needs of educating children today? Those that said, the nineteen percent that said no, we followed up and asked why, and you can see that in the bottom portion of the chart. Half of them said they need, the buildings need more space, so about nine percent. And thirty-nine percent talked about outdated, so about eight percent of the community. Student input and choice. First off, do they believe it's important for students to have input and choice in learning? Absolutely. Flat majority say it's very important, combined seventy-eight percent say it's at least somewhat important. How important is it for students to be able to work together? Yep, ninety-five percent. Five percent disagreement. And you actually had two-thirds saying that it's very important. It's actually a startling result in comparison. You get five percent of anybody disagree that the sky's blue. So it really is a very strong endorsement from residents, that that's what they're looking for to happen in their schools. Now, flexible learning spaces. Do they believe the importance of classroom design to student learning? Eighty-four percent say classroom design is important to student learning, at least somewhat. Almost a majority say it's very important. This district gets the link that other districts don't. The norm on this one is seventy percent, saying that there's a connection between classroom design and student learning. Eighty-four percent here say there's that connection. But does the school district provide sufficient flexible learning spaces? Well, sixty-four percent say you already do. So you're not in a position that you have to change people's minds, that it's important to have flexible learning spaces, and that it impacts student learning. You need to show them what it is, okay? A lot of these people haven't been in a school building, and they don't know what a modern classroom looks like. And so they're still under the perception. You're not atypical in that regard. Most districts, those residents just say, yeah, you provide it. But you are atypical, that you have almost eighty-five percent saying there is a direct Facilities equity? Is it important that there's an equity between school buildings? Absolutely. Eighty-six percent with forty-nine percent saying it's very important. Little bit more disagreement and uncertainty, does the district currently have equity between buildings? Agreement goes down to fifty-three percent on this one, twenty-four percent say flat-out no, and twenty-three percent say they're unsure. So on this one, there's much more, there's a wider gap in concern, a discussion of equity between school buildings should be part of any sort of conversation with facility improvements. The split high school campus. We finesse this question, because one of the key points of a survey like this is, I can write a question to elicit whatever answer you want, but it's not helpful for anybody. And on this question, we want it to be absolutely neutral. No value judgment, no rating. Simply tell us, what do you think about it? And you can see, with no predisposition of saying excellent, good, only fair, poor, following up with that, the residents split right down the middle, giving positive statements about the split campus, and negative statements on the split campus. Forty-three percent indicated something positive, twenty-five percent focused on the less bullying and peer pressure, having nine-twelve separated from eleven-twelve, and ten percent just says it works well, there's been no problems. Better focus on academics at five, and it helps control class sizes at three. On the flip side, having forty-three percent say something positive, you actually have forty-two percent say something negative. Twenty-seven percent say it's a high cost and a waste of money. Nine percent says it hurts the overall student's high school experience. Four percent said, just flat-out, it makes no sense. And two percent, I just separated because I thought it was kind of a unique response, said that this is really unusual. So when you put it out there in concept, the split campus, it elicits, it evokes equal positive and negative reactions. Now, we went through a series of school characteristics, and we went through the list twice. The first time, we asked them the importance of the school characteristics, and to create a hierarchy. Now, first off, it was a four-part scale. So they could say it was very important, somewhat important, not too, or not at all important. The minimum level of importance we have is at the bottom for adequate and equitable athletic spaces, with eighty-three percent saying somewhat important. So the difference between not too and important really wasn't critical here. I just arrayed the variance somewhat, with a hierarchy in the dark green saying it's very important for the school district to have this characteristic. So ninety-nine percent say it's important that they're safe and healthy for all, eighty-three percent say very important. Reliable and energy-efficient systems, ninety-nine percent, with seventy-five percent saying very important. Meeting accessibility codes, ninety-nine percent with seventy-four percent. Secured controlled entrances, ninety-three percent. Safe pickup and drop-off areas, ninety-nine. And you can see, you have almost, the entire list has more than a majority of people saying each of these characteristics is very important, going down to community pride and appearance at fifty-four percent. Now, as you set up the discussion on the referendum and facilities planning, knowing that all of those things are important is helpful. But you also have to understand that currently residents think that the rating of the White Bear Lake school districts are positive on all of those characteristics, but not enthusiastically so. So if we look at this chart, on community pride and appearance, ninety-two percent rate the current facilities positively, only three percent negatively. But only thirty-four percent say it's excellent. On meeting accessibility codes, ninety-one percent favorable, but twenty-eight percent positive. All the way down the list, to provide flexible learning spaces, seventy percent rated positively, only twenty percent excellent. So, once again, going back to what I stated earlier, when we individually set out the elementary, middle, and high school, when you break out these characteristics, they're all important, but residents at this point in time feel that the current buildings are good enough. So that link has to be made to, how do you get them to say excellent? And that goes back to, how does it impact the academic quality and the programs and opportunities students have in the classroom? And finally, a section on information. Where are they getting their information? Twenty-eight percent indicate the local newspaper, sixteen percent the district website, twelve percent word-of-mouth, eleven percent district newsletter, and eleven percent teachers. This varies depending on the power of the local newspaper, and as that's waned across the state. It is unusual to have the local newspaper lead any list as a credible source of information. This is their primary source of information, what they're telling us. And that's not a statement on local newspapers, it's just the lack of, the diminishing power of print media and newspapers specifically. Your grapevine is alive and lush and well, though. Because when we combine, as a top-of-the-mind response, the most credible source, the word-of-mouth at twelve percent, and teachers, no offense, but it's an informal communication network, word-of-mouth, it actually goes to second place. It's twenty-three percent, almost one in four, getting it from a non-traditional communication source. Now, how do they prefer to receive information? Folks will be surprised, but you actually have a majority prefer print. Twenty-six percent say a mail newsletter, twenty-six percent say the local newspaper, and then electronic separates between email, the website, and e-newsletter, and social media. So a bit of a tip still in interest of print versus electronic at this point in time. And then finally, going through specific sources of information, then we ask, do you receive a lot of information, some information, or not too much information from this source? This is arrayed by impact, with the light yellow being, they say they get a lot of information from that source. So what leads the list is district mailings and publications at thirty-three percent, with a total reach of sixty-three percent, followed by the local newspaper. But if you look at the informal discussions with friends, neighbors, and acquaintances, a lot of information is twenty-two percent, but a total reach brings it to second place at sixty-one percent. So the district communications and planning and everything not only needs to be specifically coming from the district, but you have to be cognizant of that grapevine out there, and the impact that it does have. But as you move forward in the planning, it's important to keep in mind, the district is willing to have a conversation about a referendum. You know, the devil obviously is always in the detail specifically in what's included. But at the outset, as you move forward and start talking more openly with plans and everything, it's important to link it to need, and the discussion, and how it's going to impact that classroom. That's what's going to push the needle. Your folks are willing to have the discussion. So I'd be happy to answer any more questions you might have.
Any questions regarding the survey? It's a lot of information now, a lot of information that I asked them.
It's an information dump, yes.
Yeah.
Were there any students that were in this, or like, what was the minimum age?
Over eighteen, yeah.
Other questions?
I guess it's more like, I don't know, year-round, but are there discussions towards students about the way, because the new school has been a heavily, majority impact the students' learning. So are we asking students about what they think is best for them? Because, I mean, I don't know, I hear they really care about their student life, and the way that, how things are run in the classroom and in the school, they really impact. So are we giving them a voice, or are we pretty much just talking to parents and other community members?
I think we could touch on that, see, and talk a little bit about the advisory group and exchange, and their...
Yeah. Check what the student advisor...
You did your presentation.
We had a good conversation with the student advisory group at both the middle school and the high school, specifically at the high school, to discuss what they saw as strengths and weaknesses of the split campus, and how they view it. And it was an interesting discussion, and we shared a lot of that information with the communities, and what the student voice was on that. And I think now, as we get into the spring around community engagement, Dr. Kaczynski mentioned that we talked to folks today about that, and kind of putting a plan together for, to engage a lot of people. That's, we haven't really put a plan together yet, but I appreciate you bringing that up, because I think that student, student voice is such an important part.
I guess we can, too, avoid...
Just from the standpoint that, once a question is called, and that goes to the community, if that's successful, at that point, there's a design phase that takes place to, where stakeholders, teachers, students, et cetera, would commonly be very involved in adding their voice to that process, in terms of what really comes out of the facilities.
So the students were part of the groups, too, correct?
Yeah, a handful of students. It wasn't a high representation of students in the groups, but there were some each. I think, you know, each year, our student reps to the school board have had a student engagement, student voice project. That might be, that might be yours. It's important to ask for that.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, thank you very much. Really appreciate the information, and I'm sure as we all kind of dig it a little bit more, there's going to be more questions that are going to come out into the future, so...
Absolutely.
There'll be some emails coming back and forth.
No worries whatsoever. Thank you.
With that, I believe, unless you have anything else, Dr. Kaczynski, I believe adjournment is in order.
Mr. Chair?
I'll second that. We are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.